It was a Lexus NX.
I think you should have been drifting in it.
And we changed all the, you know, mine's already twenty-two. That's a big change to where it's been up there this step and I was just like.
Okay, it's five oh five. We're gonna start our study session.
All right. Thank you Mayor Protem Cole for the microphone. Claire Last, Community Development Director. This evening, our study session is gonna be about the twenty twenty-five to forty-five comprehensive plan as has been a pattern for us lately. This evening, we are going to be discussing and hopefully getting some feedback from you all on two items. The first of which is a community vision statement for the comprehensive plan. And the second which of which is the final two land use alternatives. We've kind of worked together to to narrow down our options to to accommodate population housing and job growth over the next twenty years. So without further ado, we'll jump into the community vision. Just to go through where we've been on this, we in spring of last year started our our community engagement campaign. And we really put some pretty, pretty simple but pretty key questions out there, hoping to to get to a vision statement. That's really kind of the core of of our comp plan moving forward. So we, you, had nineteen community conversations with different community groups, ranging from Alliance Club to the ASB, to the Friends of the Wildlife Refuge. And we also had an online survey around these questions that garnered three hundred thirty responses, which is really great. And those included some, some pretty meaty narrative responses to people really, really dove in and engaged. And those questions were basically what makes Ridgefield special today? And what about Ridgefield, excuse me, would you like to see change in the future? And we kind of went over those results in previous, previous meeting here. And internally, the project team took those results and drafted a community vision statement, which is really a, a series of statements around six topics, which are small town charm, growth and infrastructure, community health and well-being, equity and inclusion, and environmental conservation and natural beauty. We took that draft out into the world, first at a community workshop in September with about twenty participants. Not a huge number, but it was a really engaged group. Counselor Chipman was there. Counselor Davis, were you there too? You were there. And got a lot of really good feedback from that group. That same day, we opened an, an online survey seeking feedback on those draft community vision statements that was open for about a month. And ultimately got about a hundred eighty responses. So with that, I'll go ahead and move into these six vision statement topics. I can either go through all of them and then talk, or it might work, work best to do one and then see if there are any comments. What do you prefer? Okay, we'll start with the first one then. Unsurprisingly, small town charm really popped out for us as a theme. Yeah, a lot of good comments about the quaint downtown, building community bonds through safe friendly neighborhoods, strengthening the community through popular events and gatherings, ensuring everyone feels connected and valued by supporting local schools and businesses, fostering a culture of volunteerism, celebrating multi-generational families, further statements about inclusive and accessible spaces and programs, celebrating diversity and residents of all ages in our town. So, any thoughts or comments on that?
Questions on that one, counsel? I have one. Oh, you have one? Okay. So I'm, I'm assuming we tie these into council goals, right? So are we matching this with our council goals to some degree, or are we just, is it, are they kind of quasi-independent?
That's a great question. They are, they are independent. I'm not expecting a one-to-one relationship.
Yeah.
But the council goals drive what you do for the community. And these statements are basically what, what the community wants of us. So it's, it's not that there's not a relationship there, but I'm not looking for like a, a match between vision statement and council goal necessarily.
I, I guess the reason why I ask is when you, normally when we say something like small town charm, you know, and then I think of our council goals and I think that, you know, how we want to drive awareness and, and growth and like make downtown the center of what we do, like is, do we see this as probably a, a primary downtown component? Or we want to say downtown charm throughout the whole city from downtown to, I mean, small town charm from the downtown to the, the junction?
Mr. Stewart may want to jump in too, but, but my take on this is that these are higher level
Okay.
statements. And then things like what you're saying about, you know, what, what are our goals for downtown? What are our goals for other commercial areas? That's like the next level down from here. And that's gonna show up in our land use, in our housing, in our economic development elements.
Exactly. That's exactly what I was gonna say. It's vision, then goals, then strategies, then tactics, in that order. Kind of so this, this is highest level that we're looking at here.
Yeah, this is kind of what, what you'll be able to go back to as we're working on those, those goals and policies and say, hey, does that jive with this?
Got it. Okay, thanks.
I mean, I, I was just gonna say, like, it's almost like, I mean, our council goals should feed off of this, because this is the, that community feedback. So I think it's important for us to match it up, but if something doesn't line up, then that's back to us to say, do we need to have a goal that aligns with what the county is telling us?
Do we have any, excuse me, idea as to how long the respondents have lived in Ridgefield? Are we talking about newly moved here people, long-term, short-term, or is that even of any importance?
So in this work that we did and the outreach that we did, I do not believe that we asked them length of residence. However, in our community survey, we do. We ask, how long have you lived here? And we ask them, what is it that you love about it? What is it that you want to keep about it? And we ask them that in the community survey each time we've done it every three to four years. And what was, what has been incredibly interesting from my perspective at least, from a staff perspective, is the vision statements that we received during the community survey, the priorities, the word cloud of what they wanted and what drew them here, didn't change based on how long they'd been here. So whether they've been here a year or fifty years, small town charm always pops as one of those upper-level vision statements for what people love about Ridgefield. So it's, it's really interesting that way, whether they just came here or they've been here a long time. That thing that is super hard to keep when you're growing as fast as we are and that all those new people are making it harder is what's driving them here.
Any other questions, counsel?
All right, we'll move along to the next one then. This is a growth management plan at its core, so growth and infrastructure, absolutely hot topics as, as we all know and as, as we all interact with every day. So based on comments and, and feedback received through the outreach process, this, this portion of the community vision statement reads, we preserve Ridgefield's unique character through balancing the needs of local growth. That balance being key, sustainable development, both in consideration of capacity for schools and public infrastructure and in things like sustainable building practices, maintaining infrastructure and making sure that it keeps pace with growth. A big one I, I heard pop personally in a number of conversations was enhancing connectivity from east to west to, to feed into that, that goal of balance across the city. The safety component for, for users, traffic flow pedestrians, walkable neighborhoods with connections to parks, open spaces, as well as connections to downtown and through another one that always pops, that trail network. Neighborhood hubs, again, that access to amenities and community gathering places. So a lot in here about balancing, balancing growth with the infrastructure to match it, as well as balancing different areas of the city is, is how I read that. Hand it back to you.
I don't have any questions on this one either. Yeah, all right.
Planning Commission had a, a comment on this. They, I should have said at the beginning, they went through these at their last meeting and were, were supportive, had a, a few comments. And one that popped on here was, is this where, could this be somewhere where a statement about housing affordability fits in?
Wait, what was the response to that, out of curiosity?
I said I'd bring it to you guys. But yeah, it could, it could be a place where that fits in, I think. I mean, there, there are other topics in here as well, but a lot of people do, you know, talking about growth, talk about affordability as part of that. Something we could tweak in here if, if council feels there's value in including that in these statements. Or not.
My initial thought on, yes, we need affordable housing, but I think when we say our plan is for affordable housing, we can plan for that, but the reality of that happening, I don't know, you know, if it will come to fruition. Will we ever have like what people would consider affordable housing in Ridgefield? And if we include something in that and it doesn't come to fruition, does it then make it look like we're not holding up our end of what we envisioned this growth and infrastructure to look like?
I mean, terminology that I kind of gravitate towards is a variety of housing types. Just because I think that's a more realistic, implementable goal. You know, like I, I would love to see condos, not just in our area, but like in general, even statewide, be more, you know, of a, of a focus and, you know, there's development reasons why that hasn't been. But, you know, whether we're talking about starter homes or townhomes or, you know, mixed-use type developments. I mean, I, I think a variety of housing types is a more appropriate term
Yeah.
to say as a, as a goal, if, if that is a goal that we, we have. And I, I mean, I think that our, our kind of sentiment has been towards that.
Just a question. What is affordable housing?
Well, that's, so, well, these are things I was gonna touch on.
Yeah, what, what do we determine affordable housing is?
Affordability is a scale, right? And so affordability is a scale based on using a certain percentage of your income to be able to afford a home. So when you talk about affordability indexes at a hundred or, you know, having it equal, you want to have a median-priced house that you are spending thirty percent of your income on the mortgage for it. That's affordable. Anything above that thirty percent, it gets less and less affordable. If I have less of a house I can afford, I can only aff- afford an eighty percent of median house with a median income, it's unaffordable. So like that's where affordability is just a sliding scale. It's a terminology that's used to kind of address whether every income level can afford a median home in that area.
Do we have data right now that supports that, like what are, what are affordable level, like where affordability levels are? Or what people are spending on housing here?
So at a county level, we, they, they have data that they are integrating into the comp plan. So they are also, in our planning process, when you, when you have seen the income strata that we've shown you and the deficit of certain income strata, availability for certain income strata, that's that.
Yeah.
That's the data. That's data driving that discussion of the fact that we zero to eighty percent of median, we have a deficit thirty to eighty percent of median, because zero to thirty is just subsidized housing. So thirty to eighty percent of median that we have a deficit in existing inventory, that, that's why we were looking to add. And then we actually have a little bit of a deficit at like a hun- I thought we had a little bit one at a hundred or a hundred and twenty.
I think above a hundred and twenty.
Above a hundred and twenty, but it's like this, it's a tiny little bit. But the majority of our deficit in inventory is at eight, thirty to eighty.
Yeah, so there's no way to like, we don't have a way to like reduce it down to say, residents of Ridgefield, the median percentage of their income that goes to housing is X.
Not that, because we don't know how much, we don't know how much they're spending on their mortgages, interest rates change.
Yeah.
So it's, that one's too complex. What we can do and what we do is the affordability, we have an affordability index for Ridgefield and there's one for Clark County that does, does look at what is the median price of a home in Ridgefield and what is the median income in Ridgefield? So it's simple math for that, to figure out like, all right, if I have this income and I just plug it into a mortgage calculator, can I afford a six hundred thousand dollar home with a median income? And the answer is no, you can't. So.
Yeah, and the part two of the study session where we talk about the land use alternatives, we can definitely get more into that, because that's why we've kind of been making those alternatives is to accommodate. To bring this discussion back up to the, the vision level, what I'm hearing in, you know, talking about variety of housing types, I think that does kind of just tie into the, the balance that's already in the statement, right?
Did you have something to say, Counselor Lewis?
Yeah. Last Thursday, Mr. Birkland and I attended the Building Industry Association's evening luncheon or dinner. And one of the things that they brought up is said that young, young people are moving into apartments, but as our family grows, they don't want to be in apartments. They want to be in a single-family setting rather than raising kids in an apartment. And I guess where that's, I'm leading a little bit off course here, and where there is that, is we need room to expand for them, which they were pushing that narrative. I'm, I'm just speaking what they were after. But it is reality that if you've got two kids, three kids, living in an apartment is not a good situation to turn around and bring them home.
One piece that is not in here, that kind of pulling from what you were speaking to is, we talk about a variety, variety of housing types, but the question is why, you know? And one of them is affordability. The other is options throughout your life. You know, basically, having, having housing for all the different stages of life.
Right.
So, and that's something that we can certainly speak to if that's something that council is feeling as far as part of the vision of that, because it does tie into the, you know, it ties into what we're, we're speaking to here. Because you're right, different, different stages in our life, we have different needs, different ideas of what we want, and it changes. And it's, and we see that in the market.
How do you encourage builders to make affordable housing? How, how does that happen?
That'll get, so this is vision level, right? And so then we're gonna have, then we have elements of our comp plan. That gets into goals. Goes, so vision, goals, and then we get into some actual strategies, implementation strategies, that's development regulations. The development regulation is where the rubber meets the road. That's where it lives. So we're like three layers from that right now, but we will get there as part of this process. We have to.
All right, shall we move on to the next one?
Let's do it.
Perfect. All right. Third one, community health and well-being. This is in a pretty broad sense of health and well-being. It's about Ridgefield's residents of all ages benefiting from a variety of services and amenities, contributing to our quality of life. Community members enjoying access to not just healthcare services, but, but other services tied to health, such as recreational opportunities, youth-oriented activities, an active waterfront district, facilities to support, to support those uses, community center, childcare, access to a variety of park amenities and trail amenities for different users, as well as emphasizing diversity in, in businesses that are available to folks. So this is really about access to, to services that, that support health of, of individuals and families and groups in multiple ways. We heard a lot of, a lot of comments about people of all ages having better access to, to things like, well, the, the quote on here is perfect. I wish we had more third-place type businesses. A third place being somewhere that isn't your work or your home, where you can spend time with yourself or your friends or your family and, and feel comfortable and connected to the community was something we, we heard a lot of.
Questions on this one? Yeah. Yeah, I think I, yeah, I don't have any changes to this one. Yeah.
Awesome. That was easy. Equity and inclusion, this is transparency, really, is one big component of this. And then sort of being a city that, that supports and is attractive to a multicultural population is the other part of it. So in Ridgefield, transparency in city planning and development processes is key to fostering trust, encouraging engagement among community members. Inclusive decision-making is at the forefront of public policy, is welcoming diverse perspectives and representation. And then celebrating our diversity through our festivals, cultural celebrations and gatherings, really embracing what we have here and, and thinking about how, how we can be more inclusive going forward.
I believe this is, is an appropriate area to maybe add something like this as any. Inclusive decision-making, there was a term in there that I was kind of grabbing onto. But I guess ultimately, do we want to have something in there that, not just like inclusive from a multicultural perspective, but from an income perspective? You know, we have, there, there's a reputation that, you know, oh, you know, it, it's, you know, a bunch of, bunch of rich people or wealthy people. Or, you know, you gotta be earning well above the, the average median income in the county to be here. But a lot of us know that there are a lot of people in our community that are not in that category. And, and I feel that it's, it, it would be responsible for us to have some sort of goal that, that ensures that a lot of, you know, our community type, you know, or community-sponsored events and, and just the accessibility is, keeps that in mind as well.
So accessibility is a word that I've heard.
Yeah, accessibility is what I was writing as you were speaking to that, because it really does feel like kind of equal access to those services and amenities, like, you know, do I have, if I'm in a lower-income area of the city, do I still have those amenities? Do I have those parks? Do I have those, those things that other areas of the city do as well? And do I have access to that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm a fan of the term accessibility. I think a lot of times when we hear it, we think of more like, like an ADA perspective. But I, I think it should also apply from a, from an income perspective as well.
Yeah, the only comment I was gonna make on that is I think that we do include, like the movies in the park, that has no income level associated with that at all. And maybe with somebody with lower income, they really appreciate, they take advantage of them things. And some of the other things that we put on too, they are included in it.
Yeah. Oh, I mean, I'm definitely not suggesting that we're doing a, a poor job, but just sort of calling it out as a, a value that, that we have.
Yeah. One thing I was gonna say, and this is just contextual, as, as it's been sort of a discussion, an ongoing discussion we've had in, in the community as, as far as feeling like, is this a welcoming pace? Is this a place where anybody can come here and say, do I belong here? I, I would love to see maybe a stronger statement. This is, this is great as is, but I'd love to see something maybe a more stronger statement that, that, that talks to that, saying this is a place where we, you know, we aspire to, everybody can come here and feel like they belong. And regardless of race, religion, creed, you know, identity or whatever else, you know, we want people to feel like this is a safe and welcoming community. So something along those lines?
Great, noted. Anything else on this one?
I think we're gonna, yeah, no, I was gonna say another one to revert back to is like National Night Out. That's the last question. Everybody's included and everybody really enjoys it. I'll just, as long as we're talking, I'll just share a, a story. Good friend of mine, professional person, looking to find a place to live. I said, well, why don't you consider Ridgefield? Oh, we can't go there. What do you mean, we can't go there? We're LGBT, whatever the appropriate phraseology is. We're not welcome there. I was taken back by that comment. That occurred in the last four years. So I think we do have a need to work on inclusion. I was, like, I couldn't believe they said it, but they did.
All right, thank you. The last, but certainly not least, environmental conservation and natural beauty. We kind of ended up bookending these six statements with two of the ones we've heard the most about through this process and through our, you know, every three to five years, community surveys as well, which is small town charm and the natural environment. So none of this will, will be surprising to anyone, but we heard a lot about preserving and enhancing our natural areas, corridors, trails, scenic landscapes, both protecting them and creating opportunities to enjoy them for, for residents and visitors. A lot of focus on the National Wildlife Refuge as really a, a jewel here in Ridgefield. And then tying this, you know, back to growth as well, sustainable building practices, native landscaping, other conservation initiatives for, for our residents, new and incoming. Safeguarding farmland, forests, lakes and streams and wildlife habitats. Ridgefield is a beacon of natural beauty and environmental stewardship where, where our community coexists with the natural environment.
I just have a question. Where's the picture taken? That's what I thought. Okay, I was gonna say, that's what I thought.
I've had a comment that I've wanted to make for a long time. And we farmed out for forty years, that parcel, Paradise Point. And if the environmental agencies would have come in, they wouldn't have liked what we were doing. But everybody thinks it's really pristine and nice. So sometimes you have trouble appeasing to the agencies, but we're still stewards of the land and we keep it up and everybody thinks it's a jewel. But they don't agree. And so as a council, I guess what I'm trying to say too, we're only environmentally sensitive, but sometimes you can be oversensitive if you turn around and appease the agencies rather than using common sense. That, that was the jewel that I wanted to put in there.
Anything else on this one?
Perfect.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Thanks for going through those, everyone. Next slide, please. What's next? So we don't have any sort of legislative requirement for council to take act- We don't have any sort of legislative requirement for council to take action, like formal action on a vision statement. So I I kind of wanna have that discussion and and leave it up to you all as what you think appropriate next steps are. Are we done with this? Do you want to take it forward for formal action? Does that look like a a public hearing or? Not open to conversation on that with.
Well, and to be clear, when we say done with this.
Not done with it, yeah.
Not done with it. We mean that so these statements, if, you know, with the adjustments that you had suggested, we would integrate those vision statements into the plan. And they became they become formational for everything that comes after it. And they get integrated into the plan, which you will hear in a public process because you have to. You'll have the actual plan, the comp plan will come back to you in whole, and this will be a part of it. The question.
Yeah, these will be in and not just conceptually a part of it like verbatim. The statements will be in there.
Literally in it. So then the question comes, do you want these by themselves? Do you want to have some sort of, you know, public? Public hearing or an action taken on them? Or do you want to just move them forward into the document and then the document moves forward? And it has, and as Director Lust mentioned, it has gone through multiple phases of public input already, but not yours. So that's why we want to ask.
I am going, can we go back to the last, the environmental? Okay. I'm gonna say this because it's gonna bother me if I don't. There's a line in here, initiatives are among the tools we use to safeguard our precious farmland. Do you feel like, do we feel like that's hypocritical? Do we really have safeguard in place to protect farmland as we're growing? And can somebody look at that and be like, are we really doing that right now, you guys?
It's actually a great point and it shouldn't be in there because we actually don't, our job as a city is literally not to do that. Because we don't have farmland in the city. So I'm not sure where that came from, but it shouldn't be in there.
We heard it a lot, but.
So, yeah, I mean, you hear it from the public. Well, yeah, so but that's the point, right? So councillor Favella, to your point. That's because we hear it because there are still parcels out there that they look at and they say, it's a farm. It's like, no, it's actually not. It's in the city. It's city property that just hasn't been developed yet, but it's slated to be urban development. So we hear it from folks, but putting it in there could be very confusing to people.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. That's that's a big purpose for this conversation is to kind of. It's iterative, right? We're we're ground truthing what we've heard with what works.
Go ahead. Well, I was gonna go back to this piece. You know, in terms of formal action, I mean, I want to go through the process of formal action if it's merely ceremonial, but I like. I like the thought of taking these five points once they're finalized and really like ha- having them prominent. You know, as these are the values that not just we created, but like the community created and we had a hand in and, you know, I wouldn't mind seeing. You know, some 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 visuals put up and just sort of that reminder that this is what we stand for. And if that requires formal action and all that to do that, then let's do it, but you know. I think that's the more important pieces. I think it should be a prominent thing.
Yeah. I I guess what I was gonna say to that too is is like I'm in general, like I think these are looking at these are they're very well written. I think they, you know, I think council has had minimal updates to them. I would like to see from the input we've given you tonight, see what a revised statement looks like and be able to sit with that or, you know. I don't know if that's through another study session or that can be something where you just send to us or something, but I'd I'd love to be able to see that. But in general, I think I'm good.
I think we could probably handle, like you said, minor but meaningful revisions through the briefings process. And then get something on the ground. Really as as soon after that as possible in terms of sharing these with back to the public, not with them, back to them.
We'll fold it into wave.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. That's that's our part one. Onto part two. All right, land use alternatives. I think we've had. Two study sessions now and multiple conversations about about land use alternatives. And the reason we create different land use scenarios is because we need to look at different ways that our city and our urban growth area could accommodate the growth that has been allocated to us over the next twenty years. And that's growth in population, housing and jobs. And not just housing, but as a as a new to all of us objective, this round of comp plan updates, housing affordable to households earning across different income levels. And that goes. Back to the discussion earlier we had about about housing affordability and and what those numbers are. So, um, next slide, please. Again, I'll just go through where we've been. There's, we've gone through a lot of a lot of work on this. And it's it's gonna kind of show and and where we get to this evening. So twenty twenty four, our project team looked at those numbers, looked at those allocations and developed a kind of a starting to land use scenarios that would work to accommodate that growth. The first of those kind of kept our existing land use patterns as is and implemented more of an overall density lift. Or increase to to accommodate that growth, whereas the second option. Showed some intensified mixed use hubs that would allow higher density housing. In exchange for other areas of the city and and the UGA remaining at at lower densities, less intense land uses. We also looked at all of the. Property owner submitted UGA or urban growth area expansion requests made to the county earlier in twenty twenty four. And thought about how those could or could not be included in these land use scenarios because we are planning for not just the city limits, but but the UGA as well. So the first alternative, we took all the ones adjacent to the existing UGA and put them in the mix. The second alternative, we focused on on two UGA expansion requests, which we've talked through before. One is the mall property to the south, which is kind of a small island. And the other one being the northern industrial urban reserve area, sort of to the east of between Paradise Point and the freeway. Basically about two hundred acres up there. So. We had with you all a study session, looking at these options, talking through them. What we heard out of that was definitely some some interest towards the mixed use hubs model. But you also asked us to come up with an alternative three, so we set off to work on that. Meanwhile, we had a community workshop, the same workshop where we where we looked at those draft vision statements. We had big maps on the tables of of the city limits and the UGA and simply asked people to show with stickers in different colors. Where would growth make sense in Ridgefield? Where would growth not make sense in Ridgefield? And. Where might affordable housing specifically make sense in Ridgefield? Likewise, that mapping activity was was online. So based on council's comments and the feedback from that workshop and the online activity. Our project team did develop a third alternative, took some elements of of one and two that that seemed favorable. It it maintained those those mixed use hubs as part of the strategy. Not quite as intense as well as maintaining just the two key UGA expansions that we had, we had heard some more targeted interest in the mall and the Zimmerley property. So, next slide. We've we've been so far, it doesn't fit on one slide. I'm channeling Kirk here, but. In in December, you'll recall, we had our second land use study session and our goal in that was, okay, we have these three alternatives. We'd like to narrow it down to two and and that's what you did as a council. And ultimately what came out of that was a a top two preferred, which was number two and number three. Both the options, including some of those mixed use hubs. The first option having more UGA expansion areas, the second option having less basically. And that tied into the county's hearing on land use alternatives on December sixth. Where Mayor Potem Cole testified. In favor of including those two preferred alternatives in the county's process, which is happening simultaneously to ours. And they, in their process, did did say, okay, those two will move forward for analysis. So we are on the same page as far as further analysis for those two alternatives. Right, um, and then last week, last week, we. So all of this conversation had been at least publicly happening around either a blank map or a map. You'll recall showing kind of blobs on it, circles of where mixed use development might happen. Upzoning might happen, annexations might happen. For this next phase, we actually took that and made it into real zoning maps, showing what that would look like and and are giving the people the opportunity through another online engagement activity to look at those maps. They can zoom in and find their property and see, okay, what would these changes mean for me and for my neighbors? And so we're getting feedback on that now and I have some preliminary comments to share, but. We'll move on to the maps. So as with like every project names change, but this is your original alternative to, if you want to think about it as option one, if that's us confusing, that is fine with me. There's a lot going on here and there's no way to avoid that, but essentially this shows mixed use hubs around Clark College, downtown waterfront. East of the Cardy Road sub area between that turquoise industrial area and the Cardy Road sub area around Clark College, pretty large area around Clark College envisioned as a mixed use hub. And then each of the the sort of diagonal black lines, one, eight, nine, ten. Three A, those are the the requested UGA expansion areas adjacent to existing city limits. So that is what it looks like on a map. I I don't expect anyone to necessarily be sitting here and absorbing, but hopefully you've you've had a chance to look at it in the packet. And we do have on the next slide some initial public response to this as well.
And council, do you want to go through both maps and so you can kind of compare and contrast? Or do you want to kind of like speak to each one individually as we're going through? Because there are there certainly there are comparisons between the two, but we can also address it individually. Yeah, of course. Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that? Okay, perfect. We'll do that.
I don't have a slide where they're both on one slide, but okay, uh, two slides ahead, Julie.
What color were the hubs?
The hubs are labeled as numbers. Yeah, so on this one, alternative three, your second living option. The the shows just the two UGA expansion areas, eight to the north and two A to the south. It shows number one is. The Clark College area, East Ridgefield, mixed use. Number three is downtown waterfront, mixed use, which we already have those zonings, each of these alternatives envisions, like expanding them a little bit. This alternative, we did, um, this kind of a mathematical exercise, we did factor in. Because it shows less land gain through expansions, we did turn back internally and factor in what if the whole G Creek sub area and Cardy Road sub area annexed and developed at the levels specified in those plans, and that's included in this scenario. No.
So, uh, that's what I was gonna ask, and I'm, I apologize because I feel like I should know this, but we did not include the G Creek Plateau, the the donut as a even the donut hole as a area to annex or that could be annexed.
So the this match, and again, a lot of this is like crunching the numbers. This map shows it as an area to be annexed, to get housing and accommodate population. The first option did not show that. The city's policy has been. As far as I know, forever to allow annexation to be a property owner initiated exercise. I don't know, Mr. Stewart, if you have anything to add to that.
We didn't include it in our site specific requests. We only like on this alternative.
No, because it's already in our urban growth boundary.
Okay, yeah, that's it, yeah.
It's already in the urban growth boundary. It just hasn't been annexed yet.
But the mall property is is technically not in the urban growth boundary?
It's actually not even in our urban growth boundary. That's the weirdest part.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when we talk about the expansion requests, those are all properties that are not currently in the growth area.
But just to clarify, this option does more or less depend on that donut hole annexation to meet goals?
To meet the thresholds for capacity at different income strata of housing.
Okay.
So yes, it's, we rely upon it.
But not in option one?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand the distinction. Thanks.
I just got one comment, the green down in the bottom and two B, none of those are in even the urban growth boundary.
They are.
They are?
They are, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's north of Cardy Road and all of that, all the way out to the junction is, yeah.
But they're still in, oh, they're in the county, but not the city level.
Exactly. They're in the UGA, they're not annexed and they're not part of the Cardy Road sub area plan. They were east of that and actually the current zoning for a lot of that is urban medium density.
That whole brown area, two B, and that shows the same on both of these maps. Because it it does, as stated, have that whole brown area as urban medium designation currently. We, in in these scenarios. Did factor that in as a potential mixed use area as well.
So the the question was, do the people in the donut hole in the plateau want to be annexed and that maybe they don't? Growth management assumes that when an area is brought into an urban growth area, that it will ultimately annex. Cities have been arguing that, especially in Clark County, for many, many, many years because of orchards in Hazeldale and Salmon Creek and Falida. And Vancouver has for a long time argued that, that cities are the appropriate service provider for urban areas because we have more tools at our disposal. So for the purposes of growth management, growth management assumes that the plateau and Cardy Road and everything in our UGA will develop as urban within a planning horizon. What we're saying is want the first option said, yeah, maybe not. Maybe maybe it won't uh develop out, and so we didn't include those numbers. And that gave us the ability to they then say, all right, well, then we need more expansion areas to be able to accommodate that population. This this alternative assumes more of that actual development within our boundary, thus not needing to expand as much. So that's one of the key differences. A lot of colors on here. So when there's, so are there other aspects of the two maps that you wanted to go through?
Not really, no. I think you hit on a a key distinction, which is one. Has less internal, more external, I guess, one the opposite. And if, and this is an if because I haven't heard what council has to say, but if the solution is both less external and less internal in those sub area plan areas, then where else is the question? Where else internally could we accommodate?
Because that would be the question. So that, which is the perfect foray, but please.
So. And this might be an easy answer, but you know, one of the goals of GMA is to reduce sprawl. Does this, does option one with all that, would that get to the point of someone saying we're not doing our effort to reduce sprawl or is that not even close to that?
This is one of those beauties in the eye of the beholder.
Yeah.
Pieces and it, there's a lot of different pieces to that.
Okay.
That you have to unpack. But for the purposes of that decision. The the interesting piece of that is we won't make that decision. The county council will make that decision. Ultimately, anything that requires an expansion of the urban growth boundary is a decision made by the county council. Every one of those requested areas is zoned ag. So add that as a layer, is that every one of those, one, eight, nine, ten. Three A even, all of those are currently zoned for agricultural production. One of the goals of the act is to reduce urban sprawl. One of the goals of the act is. One of the goals of the act is to preserve farmland, um, which is a county function, not a city function. Uh, because once it comes into a city, our job's to develop it.
Yeah.
So, so the county council has already had a lot of conversations about their reluctance to move the lines, uh, let alone to move the lines for agricultural, agriculturally zoned properties. So they are doing a study of ag production in the county. They have, uh, the county council has agreed to do that work to determine, uh, the opportunity for inclusion of some of these properties into the urban growth boundaries. But I think there is a political reality that we talk through, which is if you chose map one and the county says, you're not getting any of that land that's zoned ag, then we're gonna have to work really quick to figure out how we are going to accommodate all of that density that we're taking in those areas that are not in our boundary, in our boundary. So like, we're gonna have to densify more hubs internally. If we choose like map one and we said, that's our preferred alternative and that's what council says we want to go after, then we need to be ready for the answer that comes back from the county that says, yeah, you got greedy, you're not getting any of this and, oh, by the way, enjoy densifying, um, and, and you have to be ready for it.
Well, that was gonna be the second part of my thing was like the appetite that the county was gonna have for, you know, if it's seen as arguably sprawl, you know, anyway, all right.
When we have had conversations with the county council members, they have been noticeably uncomfortable with a map that has this many expansion requests that are zoned ag, uh, that they, they expressed a significant discomfort from my perspective in all the people who are still there, uh, in addition to the two that have arrived on the county council. That said, they have not made any determination or decision on this, so I can't speak definitively on what they will or will not do, no matter whether their staff speaks definitively or not, which they do.
I think it's worth noting too, that like all of those areas, like we, we, when we talked to the county council, we, we wanted those included because those were requested by, by property owners. And by the way, the county actually requested people submit those requests, but at the same time, I don't, I, to, to Mr. Stewart's point, I don't see that being a reality, you know, but I, you know, going with an alternative that I think that is more realistic, is that what you're saying? Like alternative three was probably more realistic in that regard?
If you're, if you're speaking to more realistic from the perspective of the county's process and how much acreage, um, would be necessary for expansion, probably, yeah. Because from a county staff perspective, they've said that there is adequate acreage and I think Council Wells heard this and Councilor Burkle heard this at a BIA meeting where they are hearing that the county, and they had told people there, we need to get, you know, we need to get, uh, two of our county council members and speak to them because the county is saying they have adequate land inside urban growth boundaries and they're not going to move the lines is what, unless I heard you incorrectly.
Yep.
So, so that is what others are hearing.
Okay. Yeah. Is there anything that's floating around in the legislature that would impact maybe decision making on one side or the other? Cause I know there's a lot of creative housing focused bills being put out there. And so I guess that's almost more of a timing thing, like is that?
It is, there's a lot going on, but we're so early in the legislative session, it's hard to know what's gonna stick, but just reading through the bill list and all the, and all the bills that are out there, it's not just housing, they have stuff on parking requirements, um, you know, they have, you know, basically eliminating our ability to require parking, off street parking, uh, because it's, it's taking away developable acreage. Uh, so there are, there's everything from that to having our development regulations have to be submitted to commerce for their review and approval, which is the first time that that would ever happen in the history of GMA, that they would have approval authority inside of this. And that if it wasn't consistent with that, then, um, that there would be, uh, basically that, you know, that, that you couldn't, uh, deny a subdivision, that if you, if your development regulations weren't consistent with all of these new housing requirements and the parking and all of that, then the developer could say, great, well, I don't need your approval city, we'll just do it. So there's, this is early though, so, but yeah, they are talking about things that will be integrated into this comp plan process and they continue to change them and we're in the last year of when we're supposed to be adopting these, so I don't know how that's gonna play out.
I mean, that's a big reason of, of why, I mean, there's so many, having this conversation, it's like, well, there's so many loose threads, why, like, why are we talking about this yet? And it's because every other element of the comp plan and all of our capital facilities plans depend on answering this question of where does growth make sense in Ridgefield? And we can't wait for the county to decide.
But the legislature has the same opinion that they can't wait. There was just recently, just today or yesterday, there was a report that was released by our new governor, by Governor Ferguson, that he had a housing action team on his, uh, transition team that was led by the lieutenant governor, Heck. And it's an interesting report that's worth reading, but it has just a litany of mandates for local governments of what we have to and cannot do and that they want to integrate them into this planning process. Historically, when they have new requirements, they would say, okay, in the next review cycle, then is when you're gonna do it. And that gives time to be able to develop it, but the legislature and the governor are feeling pressure based on the housing crisis to do things now and integrate them into the planning process. So the question's gonna be, how? How are we going to integrate all of these new requirements at, when we have a deadline of this year? And these are all fundamental foundational things that we have to decide right now.
So I guess this is, you know, admittedly maybe too challenging of a, of a, of a question to answer right now, but I'll ask it anyway. Is there either, is either option filled, i- i- is, does either option have a bunch of red flags based on some of the ideas that have been floated at the legislature? I- i- is there a sense of what I'm seeing out of the legislature, if we went with option one, it's gonna, it's gonna create a whole lot of this, or option two is gonna create a whole lot of that and we would have to do some changes?
So based on the...
That's guessing, right?
It's, it is guessing. Some of it is guessing, some of it's numeric, because we do know that the density calculations are going up, that they are requiring us to allow ADUs, duplex, triplex, things we already do, but that they are relying on that missing middle infill redevelopment, uh, as part of the requirements that they have created for us and they're requiring us to track. So we know that that is something that the state is requiring as part of housing element and part of what we're doing for land use. And so if you have a land use that allows for, um, lower density, uh, single family residential and leans into that more, then that produces more red flags from a state requirement standpoint. Is it a fatal flaw? No. Um, but it does produce, uh, something that becomes a little more difficult for us to work through. Uh, and then again, add the layer of those expansion areas and their current zoning. Certainly from a, an inclusion in the urban growth boundary perspective, that's the biggest red flag is if it's zoned ag, it's tough. Um, that's the biggest red flag on it, but once it gets in, expanding your area and not assuming that you're going to develop the area you already have, that's a red flag from a state perspective, as far as that goes. The other alternative has some of that though, it has expansion areas. Um, they're a little more targeted and there are fewer of them. And so that makes it a little less of a red flag. That said, you as a council could say, you know what? Our community wants this, wants option one, that's what they want. And now the county and the state can tell you no. Um, but you can say, this is our preferred alternative. What I would suggest is if that is the direction you would like to go, the county has already asked us, well, what if you don't get this? Then what are you gonna do? And it's a, especially for this, it's a really good question.
Yeah.
And it's one that if you go this direction, my request to council would be, give us some, give us some leash to come back with something that doesn't include any of it.
Yeah.
And sh- and then we're gonna have to have some tough conversations about, okay, well, where are we gonna add density if we can't get any of these expansion areas?
Isn't that what alternative three is though? I mean, I, I felt like that's what we...
Alternative three is more so, but it does have two, if you go to the alternative three, option two, map, it take, nope, map. There we go. So in that map, it still does have a significant number of acres in eight, right? So it still does have a significant expansion area that is in urban reserve. So it's a really, it's a much better case to make, uh, but we have a significant amount of acreage that we'd be brought in. The mall acreage is pretty small, um, you know, we're not leaning into that one as heavily, uh, but it does produce, you know, it produces some units for us, but the biggest mixed use hub that we would be losing is eight. So we'd have to find a place, think about that acreage and then look somewhere in that urban area and figure out, all right, where are you gonna, where are you gonna put it? So that's, that's the mech, that would be the exercise.
Yeah.
That if you went with a, an option one, an alternative to option one, we would be asking, okay, give us, us some latitude to actually figure out what's our backup plan? Because by the time the county makes a decision, we're gonna be under the gun. We're gonna be really behind and it will be difficult to make our deadlines.
And as a corollary to that, this, the, the same thing holds if you're looking at option two and thinking, great, but don't love seeing those annexation areas in the G Creek Plateau and Cardy Road. That's, it's the same question, okay, where, where does that go?
Yeah.
Do...
And for the ones that are already in the boundary, just understand that things do change and things are changing in the G Creek Plateau. We know this already and we know that there have been, you know, s- the starting points of annexations that have already started to occur there and then in obviously in the Cardy Road sub area as well. So things change over time in that, but from a planning perspective, from a like, what do you want from the community perspective? This is, I mean, you could, this is your chance, you can definitely, you know, pound your fist on the table and say, this is what our community wants. And then it just puts the county and the state in the position of saying, no.
Do we wanna look at what some of our survey respondents have said about these options? Okay, Julie, can you go back one slide? Okay, so this is for option one, alternative two with the, um, areas eight, nine and 10 were those east side expansion areas. Um, and I, these aren't direct quotes, I'm paraphrasing to fit it on the slide. Also, like one row is not the same person saying both of those things. Um, so some things folks liked so far about, um, the first option, which had more expansion areas and did not show annexations, was, um, sort of a general statement about increased housing density to support small commercial hubs, more walkability. Um, those east side UGA expansion areas, eight, nine and 10, could relieve, um, crowding and congestion along the Pioneer and Royal corridors, could also provide a good outlet for housing and feed into some east-west balance. Um, they like seeing the mixed use hub around Clark College for future job development and, um, smaller impact on downtown. Dislikes, not enough commercial, but, um, northern UGA expansion area is too close to residential and, um, too much sprawl on the east side. So we're hearing, both sides here basically, um, but in terms of those UGA expansions, I mean, too much sprawl versus could be a good outlet. All right, um, two slides ahead. So this is for option two, which only has the northern and southern UGA expansion areas and does show, um, sub area annexations, more walkability east of Royal and north of Pioneer, development is more on the west side, more business opportunities downtown. Again, not enough commercial, will place more traffic on Royal and Pioneer, same comment about the northern industrial reserve area being too close to residential. Area six, that's a G Creek Plateau, negative impacts on the environment and residents, um, higher density housing in areas that are already crowded and have high traffic. Yeah.
I got a lot of comments, but I probably can't remember them all. Not enough commercial or, and, and industrial, okay. Yeah, and actually, how about the picture before, because I'm looking at 2B or 3B? Oh, one is 2B and the other is 3B. The 3B below the 3B, the brown, it's a highly agricultural area. Right below the B, there's about a 25 acre piece that's a lighter brown. That's the only thing that's in agricultural period. The rest is brush, uh, not forested brush, brush. I, I mean, I'm just, and it's considered agriculture. I guess if you grow brush, that's considered. Yeah. That's what?
Not ag.
Not asked?
Not ag.
Non-act. Oh, it's not ag, egg? Oh, okay. I thought it was, I thought you said it was.
3Bs?
We were more or less...
3B is in our boundary.
And it's urban medium density currently.
Urban medium density is what 3B is now and has been in the county's zoning, in their county zoning, it's been that since the 2016 plan. So it, that is in our boundary currently and has been zoned for urban medium level density developments since then.
It could be one of the density hubs, you know, with topography.
That is what's being proposed in this and you would know better than, you know, any of us as to whether that makes sense.
Right. And the green, green and that real dark green and the green there, that's the rest area. That, that little splotches in there, uh, on the right hand side, that, that's the rest area and, and a lot of, that's not agricultural. Go, next slide, Julie. Okay, whoops, no, not the, not the picture right there. Not enough commercial. Um, in our briefing the other day, uh, we were brought up with across the street from Rose Hours about probably having that as a hub with housing in there, dense, or density housing in that little section. I'm speaking from my perspective, uh, and everybody can, uh, I think that is really suitable as far as a hub. I'd hate to see a hub a little farther beyond. One of the comments, uh, north industrial reserve area is too close to residential. That's North 10th and it's on the north side of North 10th. That's fairly flat, fairly easy to turn around and put into industrial without a lot of, uh, input. And then maybe further north on that, you get close to 260, 280, 289th, 289th, then you're starting to get into uneven ground and a hub could be in personal in that area there. So we've got one at 269th, which is Pioneer Street, then you go to 289th, which is a mile away and put your hubs in there and not use up the good commercial ground because the commercial ground makes jobs for the people that are living in the community. My perspective, that, 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 that's it. What was that? Too much sprawl on the east side. Uh, I'm not commenting much on the east side, but, uh, anyway, I'm done.
Just real quick, council, it's, uh, 10 after 6:00, I wanna probably wrap up by 6:20 at the latest. So any more thoughts on, on these?
Can we go back, Julie, please? Option, yeah, this is our first, I'm, this is the one that really speaks to me because, I don't know, I like option one, I know we're saying it's probably the one that would get shot down, but I think when we say, what would the community want? I know we're hearing from the community, but it seems like this is more aligned with what the community would want than the second option. And I think if we're here to speak on behalf of the community, then we should take that into consideration, obviously is what we're doing, but option one is where I would like to see go, us go.
Before, so for this process and I, go to the last slide, please. There we go. So this is where we are right now and the discussion you're already having us, i- is helping us get there. The question is for this one, because there is a lot of detail associated with this, this is in a higher level, this is maps. So is this one where in a more formal structure of decision making, which a study session is not, um, is that something you want to bring back for a, uh, for a formal discussion of a preferred alternative? Because, and I, I don't wanna short circuit the conversation about what you would like to see, but I also wanna be clear that this is not the appropriate forum to make a decision.
Our, our surveys lie until next week anyway, so we will have more...
We'll have a little bit more data, yeah, until next week.
But that is the only mechanism to really formally make a recommendation to county council, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's just, it's anecdotal.
Yeah.
It is not a formal direction to the county of what you would like.
Yeah. Yeah, and I guess just one last clarification, I, I guess I got maybe crossed up, because I thought that, um, for some reason, I thought that, that option one had more of an impact on the G Creek Plateau, is that incorrect? Okay, o- o- other way around.
Other way around, correct.
So, we're, we're, in a way, we're taking more ag land, even if it might not, you know, it, it really be ag land, but it's zoned ag land, and, and, but it's, it, but the trade-off is you know, enhanced protection of the G Creek.
Well, and for, for the G Creek Plateau? No, uh, becau- unless you change the G Creek Plateau subarea plan and implementing code, and something with the Cardi Road subarea plan, and then whenever we come up with implementing code, is that both of the alternatives assume the zoning that is contained within the subarea plan, which was set up to create those protections within an urban frame, which has legal requirements for at least four units per acre as a minimum density to be classified as urban, uh, so, it has those. And so, someone could still come in and, and request annexation, because they're inside the boundary. So, when we talk about preservation, I just wanna be careful about the language.
Well, and that's, that's why I wanted to clarify.
It's just, we're not assuming it would all annex in that first, that's the difference.
So, can we request, like, once the public comment period is over, to maybe add this to a briefing conversation?
Absolutely, yeah, and, and I'll, I'll remind council, too, as is often the case, when we present two options, it doesn't have to be one or the other, it can be elements from both of them, yeah.
So, council, is this something, then, that we could work with you on, bring you back something in a formal decision-making setting, so that we do have a formal determination from council that we can take forward to the county?
It's looking like yes, yeah, let's do that.
We will.
Alright, thank you very much.
That's it, alright.